All the. Subject. May nineteenth, city council meeting to order at seven oh four. Please rise with a. I play the.
Thank you, councillor President Dunbarrow.
President.
Councillor Page.
Present.
Councillor Hagedorn.
Here.
Councillor McCall Wallace.
Present.
Councillor Payton.
Present.
Councillor Reading here and Mayor Goodwin is excused this evening.
Thank you. All right, um, next on the agenda, item six A, we have the approval of the minutes from May fifth. I'll entertain any motions or comments.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All second.
Motion proven seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor of accepting the consented or approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is the proclamation of Neff National Public Works Week. And before I do this, I just want, would be remiss if I didn't point out, uh, the council of Paul's reminded me of last week was. National Police Week, so.
I had asked the county for a proclamation for, yeah, and I didn't get one, so. I know, but we, we celebrated them in the office and.
Yes.
In fine form, so.
And we do love our, our public and our public safety both, so I just wanted to be clear that we're not leaving anyone out. We love all of our city employees.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna. Read this. Um. National Public Works. Week proclamation, May eighteenth through twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, people, purpose and presence. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital to the importance. That are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and the well being of the people of North Plains, Oregon, and. Whereas these infrastructure facilities and services would not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers. Managers and employees at all levels of government and private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply. Water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures. And facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders and. Children in North Plains to gain knowledge and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works. And public works programs in their respective communities and. Whereas the year twenty twenty five marks the sixty fifth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, Vietnam. Result, I, Aaron Dunbarrow, council president of North Plains. To hereby designate. The week of May eighteen through twenty four, twenty twenty five. As National Public Works Week, I urge all citizens to join with represent, representatives of the American Public Works Association. And government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals. Cody Brown, Isaiah Cooper, Javier Espinoza. Matt Schnapp and Dustin. But Nadi, Mukana D, sorry. Almost had that one right, uh, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety and advancing the quality of life. Or all North Plains residents stated this nineteenth day of May twenty twenty five.
Appreciate you reading it out loud and just have more of us.
Wait, no, no, not when I'm. Sheesh. Barely read. No, we do appreciate you all, though. And I'll read them out loud as long as I'm. Okay.
Councillor Dunbar, can I?
I'm sorry, I'm so.
Just want to say thank you and I swear to hear all the names. Because I'm, I'm not sure everyone in the community knows who all of our public works folks are and, um. And then also, you know, sort of recognizing the little things. That we take for granted, you know, like the length of the grass. Or in the empty trash can that I just throw something into, or, you know, streets being cleaned or those kinds of little things. And, and just within the parks themselves and the care for. The plants and everything else that goes on, it's kind of all the, the hidden little stuff that we don't think about and put a person to all the time. So I just want to say thank you very much, appreciate it.
Well, thank you, councillor, well said. Anyone else? Okay. So, uh, next will be public comment and I will just, uh, remind everyone, the councillors and the public as well. Um, just we're all neighbors, so please try to remember that while we may disagree, let's try to be, uh, good neighbors to each other. And with that, um, I'll welcome Mr. Chris Edmonds. And we'll, we'll limit you to three minutes that we can get through all the comments and.
Thank you very much, councillor. I will try to be neighborly and at the same time very clear with my remarks. Uh, I haven't planned to testify this evening, Chris Edmonds, um, I live in Westland, Oregon, but I hear representing. The Eastside Property Owners Coalition, they just live on the other side of McKay Creek from here. And for the purpose of this testimony, I'll remind you who they are. So they are the Van Domlin family, the Baboski family, the Maltese family, the Van Raven family. And who did I forget the Vandersees, can't forget the Vandersees, um. I watched the planning commission meeting and I was a little bit disturbed. This is a bit of a pull the ripcord situation for me to be testifying to you all like this tonight. Um, because it was really difficult for me to explain in my mind, even to try to create political hypotheses about what I was seeing. As I saw a planning commission, uh. Be presented with information from DLCD, uh, be presented with information about multiple rounds of public testimony in the development process, your own land use planning staff. Uh, testify about all of the good work that has come in, um, and then to see, uh, only at the end of that meeting. Multiple councillors. Uh, uh, appear to not have taken in any of that information that was coming from the planning commission. Uh, or from your own consultants or your own staff. But instead. To just. Reject it. So. I wanted to remind you about a little bit of how we got here and who my. Nearly one hundred clients are. They're century farming. They've been here in this community, in and around this community for longer than I would get into anybody sitting in this room. And certainly longer than many of the people who are sitting at this table tonight. In twenty fourteen, the Eastside Property Owners joined the city and Thousand Friends of Oregon. Eleven years ago in supporting and passing HB forty seven Y. Which left the lands around this city undesigned for future expansion and growth. That effectively put their lands into purgatory. They're not being farmed. It isn't economically viable to farm that land, nobody's going to make multi decade investments in agricultural upgrades. Or any sort of development on that land while there's a cloud over it. Right now, this council is just choosing to perpetuate this cloud, which just means that my clients have to maintain the property. They have to pay property taxes on the property, but they can't farm it. It doesn't provide enough for anybody to live on. And at the same time, they can't develop it because the city's been. Guiding them essentially through a bait and switch since twenty fifteen, which is when this visioning process started. Nothing that this council does will revert that land to agricultural use when we decide, it will never happen. All that you will do is kick the can down the road and mean that these families have to pay more property taxes, more maintenance on land that's not being utilized. More consulting fees, more planning fees.
That's fine, thank you.
All right, I will write a letter about this, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, for your comments, uh, Mr. Doug, if.
Yeah.
Uh, if you could give your, um, come on up and give your, um. Inside or outs, inside or outside the city and, uh, you're going to talk to us about the Brent Hill stop sign, I'm sorry, yeah, Brent Hill stop signs and speed limit.
Yes, okay, my name is Doug, last name is Ift, I F F T. I live in Brent Hill on Timberick, which is. But my area is New Year, but I think it's the northern end of Brent Hill. And the road is the longest road without a stop sign on it and. We have a park that has pickleball and several other things that's right on that road. And I don't have an app on my phone, but there's people going at least fifty miles an hour. On that road, and I think. I'm guessing the reason is because, again, there's no stop from, from it, at the beginning to the end. And you look on the north side and just see split roof fence. And they're just going at unbelievable rates of speed and I'm hoping that. You all approve putting a, at least one stop sign somewhere. On that road in the middle or wherever you want to put it. Just to slow people down. I also noticed, just as a side note, there's no speed limit signs in the community that I saw. Not that I'm sure that would help, because I've seen people driving and looking at their phones, so they're not going to look at the speed limit sign anyways, but. If, if, I, I'm just concerned, uh, I'm well past having children of that age myself, but I'm concerned that. This summer is going to get bad and someone's going to get run over. And it, it's just ridiculous speech, I mean, it's crazy ridiculous speech. And that was the main thing that I just wanted to come in front of you all and, and ask you about that and see if there's a way that we could. Get it through a stop somewhere on that road.
Um, so we, we can't respond during public comment, but if one of the councillors wants to bring that up during, uh, council, council comments, we'll, we'll, uh, take that up.
I just have a point of clarification.
Okay.
So are we talking about on Timberick?
Yeah.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, so we'll, that, that'll come back up during, uh, either council reports or, um. For council comments.
It's at the end?
Yes.
Okay. So. That, that was all I was looking for, I, I don't, I just don't see. People don't seem to care too much about the speed bumps that's on. Three oh nine is like all right over, so they don't seem to care about that and, uh.
Understood.
And just thought I, I hope that you guys could take a look at it.
Yeah, and I appreciate the comments, appreciate bringing that to our attention.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Uh, next we have Jacqueline Hunt. Um, if you just come up and give us insider outside the city and I believe you're going to talk about U G B.
Okay. And so Jacqueline, I live at three two seven nine zero, North Plains, nine seven one three three. And I'm going to read a short letter and introduce that document. Um, our family's been pretty quiet and we wanted to take, um. The invitation we heard to present. So as members of fourth generation farming family with deep roots in North Plains, we care deeply about the future of our town, its people, its land and the values that make it special. Our family has farmed on the edge of the city for more than a century. Um. And we have raised our children, supported our neighbors and embraced growth with the belief that true stewardship means looking beyond today towards the legacy we leave for future generations. We recognize that growth presents challenges. Many residents worry about losing the rural character and close knit spirit that defines our plains. We share those concerns. Yet we also believe that it is not only possible but essential to grow with intention, preserving what matters most while investing in what strengthens us as a community. Over the past several years, we have listened carefully. We've had peer, heard real concerns about overdevelopment, pressures on our planning commission. And the risk of farmland being lost to impersonal sprawl. We've also heard consistent hope for more affordable homes so that our children can stay, for parks and gathering spaces. And to serve all of our families and for thoughtful forward thinking, infrastructure planning. And like you, we want solutions, not shortcuts. One opportunity that embodies this vision is the Lind Reservoir for our family and for a few others with personal ties, it has been a place of connection. A place, uh, where memories are made fishing, picnicking, learning to water ski. And celebrating our life milestones. Through Lakeview Farms Pumpkin Patch, my parents sought to share that spirit of tradition and seasonal joy. Uh, more broadly with the community. Looking forward, we see the reservoir as a space with tremendous potential. Where carefully considered enhancements could create lasting value for North Plains while preserving the heart of what makes it special. Over time, we have shared ideas and renderings about how the reservoir could be thoughtfully enhanced with walking trails, sports fields and gathering spaces. These are not distant aspirations, but feasible improvements designed to strengthen connection, expand recreational access and support the shared version, vision for public spaces. In response to community concern, concerns, we've also explored models across the country. That show how growth can strengthen, not weaken our town's agricultural heritage. One of those such models is called an agro hood. And, uh, this is the front page to a document that I shared.
Sorry, Jack, that's, that time, um, but we do have your letter and, um. I'm sure this will come back up. Towards the end.
Okay, um, so want to end with inviting each of you to walk the reservoir with us, um, so that we can consider what that space might look like in the future.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, um. I have. One is, uh, Emily Waldron, if you can come up mute and give us your name and insider outside and you wanted to speak on U G B.
Yeah, hi, my name is Emily Waldron, um, I reside just outside the city proper North Plains. Although for the purposes of this meeting, I'm way far away in eastern Michigan, so I might win the record for calling in the furthest. Uh, I. Am not a century farm yet, but my hope is that under my husband and I or my children, we can be a century farm, my grandparents. Purchased the land that I live on in nineteen fifty nine, so not quite there, but getting there. Uh, I wanted to speak to the continued U G B conversation, I have concerns for a few reasons. Uh, one is that I was a part of the realit committee and I have been worried watching city meetings on how the realit committees. Uh, findings, if you will, are being represented. And continuously it keeps being sold that we made a choice and that's not true. Uh, there was a lot more discussion and we were kind of told like maybe we'll have more meetings and that was the mindset I know a lot of people had with picking the map they liked the most. Versus like this is the map I actually want to see become reality in North Plains. I also am worried because at that last planning committee meeting earlier this month. The DLCD repeated numerous times that we are not beholden to the H and A. And that it is best for North Plains to wait until the new housing needs system comes into place. And it seems like that continuously is the advice that we get from these state and county entities. And there are people who continue ignoring it in this design to just get something through as fast as possible. Why are we ignoring this? Why are we steamrolling for growth? Growth is always possible. As I am told many times, tech is not going anywhere, there are always opportunities to expand, people are always moving into town. And then the area, so none of this is going to go away if we don't make a choice today. And it makes more sense to heed the DLCD advice as well as the advice of others. To wait and see how some of these new systems and changes play out and how they will impact things for us in the town. Thank you, and also I guess I'll say, because I have like ten more seconds probably, um, it makes sense to have more meetings with more people, I know we had a hard time with relook. With getting citizen turnout, uh, the city council pays. Towards things like the ice cream social in the community and I think the strawberry festival and a lot of the other events put on the, by the North Plains Events Association. And if we're going to pay for it, that seems like a great time to get community input and involvement. Because people are more likely to show up for an ice cream cone than they are going to show up to pick out a map on how they want us to grow. And with that, I'll see you anytime I have left, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, and, uh, finally I have. Linda Galas Martin, uh, Shuri Von Polak, if you can just come up mute and state your name and insider outside.
Good evening, council president and council, my name is Linda Galas Merton. Here to represent the view of the North Plains Chapter of Strong Towns. Uh, I personally live just outside the city limits, um. But not in nine seven one three three, but, uh, many, many of our members live inside the boundary lines. Um, I'm here at, tonight to talk about the surety bond again, um. And remind the council that as per section thirty two point oh five of the city code. It was mandatory. For the city manager to secure a surety bond on the day he assumed his position. Regrettably, it has now been six and a half months since the city manager was hired and this critical requirement. Remains unfulfilled. I hope you prove me wrong tonight, however. The importance of this bond cannot be overstated as it serves as a legal safeguard. For the city and it's integral to the responsibilities of the city manager's role. At the council's last meeting on December sixteenth, twenty twenty four. The then mayor made a pointed reminder to the city manager emphasizing the necessity of a surety bond. Don't forget, she said. Despite this, no action has been taken to remedy the situation, leaving the city in non compliance and vulnerable. We urge the council to act decisively and ensure that this matter be resolved promptly. So you yourselves cannot be held liable. It is imperative that we uphold the standards set forth in our code. And maintain the integrity of our governing processes. Thank you for addressing this issue with some urgency.
Thank you, Linda. Okay.
Well, thank you, Dunbar, I have a point of clarification on that one. So, um. Uh. Linda Galas Merton, uh, the point of clarification, I was helpful to hear earlier from another public comment, um. Uh, who, who they represent and you mentioned that, that you represent and you were, you were there speaking for smart, sorry, strong towns. Can you, uh, tell us who is, who is on the steering committee?
No, I cannot, and it's not that I cannot, but I will not, this is not the venue to do that, Madam Councillor. Um, and it's not time to deflect the argument from the surety bond to whoever is on the steering committee, I will.
Okay.
I will invite you to a meeting at the appropriate time and you can find out that for yourself.
Let's go ahead and get on to that.
Thank you.
So, uh, first staff report, we have is library. You're open, Robin.
Good evening, city council. Well, just a few updates from our report, um. We have been celebrating. Uh, Asian American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month this month. And we have a display in the library and, and this is a very meaningful, uh. This is a meaningful observance for our community from the twenty twenty three American Community Survey put out by the US Census. Twenty percent of our North Plains population is Asian or Pacific Islander or Native Hawaiian. And. I'm confirming that the summer reading theme is level up at your library this summer, we just received a two thousand dollar donation from the Friends of the North Plains Library. To supplement our, uh, summer reading program, that's part of their regular budget. And that helps provide additional giveaway books for, um, youth participants and, uh, just, uh. Additional and better help or programming that we'd be able to afford on our, um, city budget alone. Uh, I wanted to, uh, on the communications, um. Theme, say that when people sign up for a library card, we do, uh, add them to our monthly library buzz, um. Newsletter mailing list that they can opt out of, I'm fairly certain that's how we do it. Uh, and then people also have the option of signing up for the W C C L S newsletter as well. Um, and so. That those who have a library card and I believe we added all of your city emails to the buzz, so, uh, you should be getting the buzz at your city. Emails, um, that's another communication tool that we use. And finally. I just wanted to, uh, say that we've been hosting a drive for. Um, hygiene toiletry items for the Hillsborough School Districts and McKinney Vento Program and our. Ben collection box is overflowing, it ends tomorrow. And it's been, uh, we were very happy to, to. Uh, collaborate with them and have that and it's, um, they've gotten, we just really appreciate all the donations, our very city reporter did a large donation, thank you, Lori. And believe that is all my updates for this evening, questions?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for celebrating the, uh, Heritage Month and celebrating diversity in our community and the world, thank you.
Our pleasure.
Other comments?
Have you received any, um, applications for the people? For the appointment for the city, the library board? We have, we've received two requests for reappointment for a second term and then two additional applications so far. Excellent, yeah, oh, and I, I believe we have an updated statistics form for you.
I guess we didn't have a chance, but that's no problem.
Uh, there was a TBD number on my statistics report and, um, the city reporter has a copy for you with the number filled in, that was a number we had to wait. For the county to provide. Because it's how the network is used by Canadian members. How many hours of internet? We have that update for you. It was nine hundred and seventy, nine hundred and seventeen. Hours of computer and internet access for people. Is that average? No, that's just the total.
No, but is it, is it up or down? Well, how are we trending on that decision?
Um. See, that's pretty typical, I'd have to look, uh, at the past ones.
Also is that for just people that are staff, like they're looking online for other libraries and where, where the books?
It wouldn't.
Or is that people can live in the street using it?
It could include staff if they are on the wifi on like their phones or something, but it, it doesn't count our staff computers, it's public access. Then that's what that stat is.
Well, thank you, Robin, appreciate that.
Uh, since Nick's not here, should I put this one? Oh, or is? That would be definitely. Oh, okay, well, uh, I'm not sure we're up with it, no?
You're up, yeah.
I trust everyone got a copy of the staff report Chief Jones put together.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, I'll make it short and simple, I have no further comment on the staff report.
Questions? I know someone's got a question.
I do, can you give us a briefing on, um, the big buzz of North Plains that happened on Sunday?
Big buzz that happened on North Plains on Sunday, so. Well, the buzz, can you define the buzz?
Yeah. Um, we had a.
Come on.
Well, we had a.
It feels like it, it's close enough.
We had some enthusiastic door knockers with, uh, uh, that were maybe not well intended.
So I.
That's a funny way to put it.
That's a great way to put it, I cannot. Give you really many details on it, uh, currently, um. Suffice to say. Uh, many open cases involving these individuals. Don't work on it.
Do you have any advice for citizens, um, if they're in that situation, could say?
Yeah, my advice would always be, yes, call in because we don't get nearly enough calls, we see. Uh, people like to post on Nextdoor and Facebook groups, but they just don't call police. Uh, so we end up not either behind the eight ball or we just don't know. So please, if you see anything suspicious, especially, um, you know, these individuals are using, you know, a delivery driver tactic. Then be delivery driver, so if you see something that just doesn't feel right, call us, because we want to, we'd rather get there and find out that it's nothing, uh, rather than miss something unfortunate.
Anything else? Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Practically painless. All right, um, and Dustin, Public Works.
What do you mean, councillor? Likewise, I do not have anything to add and I'm open for questions.
Oh, sorry.
I see, um, in your report, there was a nice thoughtful section about emergency management. And a potentially program, but wanting to put a good strategy in place to not overstep with some already preexisting plans, can you come up, Barbara?
Um, the, the only elaboration I can really have with that, it's always great to have volunteers from the community, but we also need to make sure that we are not overstepping bounds as well. So we're not duplicating efforts, and so when Chief and I met with this individual, um, we kind of expressed that and it's like, it's always great. Especially if we can have a pipeline of volunteers that are certified, the more the merrier. Um, and so don't have any problems with, um, having any coordination like that in the future.
Well, this parlay into a certificate program that the community can participate in, I was just trying to understand and get some context.
Right now, that's all on the volunteer, uh, how they want to proceed with that.
Okay.
I can, so it's actually through, um, even if it's Washington County, part of it. Search program, but I will follow the question, but I think councillor Reading wants to answer.
And it partners with hers, if, if, in, on page two or three, it's, and I was saying something about a volunteer and donations coordinator is who. And it partners with hers. If, if in, on page two or three, it's, and I was saying something about a volunteer and donations coordinator is who we would contact. Who is that person?
That would only be defined in the case of an emergency, but that's spelled out in our emergency operations plan.
So we don't have a name.
So we would know. So basically, when there's an emergency declared, typically it works with, at least in my experience, correct me if I'm wrong. Emergency management is people get assigned paths and depending on who's on scene, there's somebody that coordinates all the volunteers, part of the search program through the, um, county.
So the volunteers have like a, F block, first person to contact, this second spot, second person to contact. They have like somebody's on call for emergencies. Is that your data or?
Depends on the emergency.
It depends on the emergency.
Yeah.
It really, it's, it's all emergency dependent.
Have we had run like practice drills on this? I mean, we're all sitting here kind of in the dark, it sounds like. So how, you know?
One of the things that I am in the process of doing with Washington County, because, uh, Washington County does a lot of coordination with this. And there's a lot of tabletop exercises. Uh, we haven't gone through a lot of them recently, but we are planning on doing that in the future.
We have staff has done it.
Yes.
Yes, that
More than once.
Typically does do it. And, um, having done it in a small town, setting up, uh, working with volunteers for a search team because not a big enough town to do all the work, um, as well as going through an exercise, an actual thing happened. So, um, that there are within the, within the emergency managers typically specific roles or specific people who are already tasked with certain things. So it may be the city manager's task for something or the, uh, public works director, et cetera, et cetera. And then there's also some within those who's going to be doing the volunteer assignments and coordination usually. And so in this situation, those people who are trained are sort of the lead volunteers. But it doesn't mean that other people of the community don't get pulled in and involved too. So that, um, in terms of handling the emergency altogether. So I, I mean, I hear what you're saying. There hasn't been, you know, have we run through that process? And does this document probably need to be updated? Do we probably need new volunteers? Do we probably have existing volunteers in the community that are trained? Yes to all of those probably.
So I guess my follow-up was, um, do we have a, um, uh, I know Johan Far was working with Chief Jones on the, um, volunteer stuff. Is that moving forward or we?
I cannot speak to what, what she Jones is working with her, but there's, there's a lot of overlap because it's not just me. And it's also Robin and Chief. So there's a lot of different things and it kind of depends on whatever emergency that comes up, then everything will kind of gets.
And the reason I'm asking is just more, um, how as people have these questions, do we? I guess, I guess we're not ready to direct them to somebody to say, hey, here's, here's who you can go talk to to make sure they know what skill sets you can bring to the table in the event. But at some point, I assume.
We don't have anything in the city that says, hey, you know, we don't have like a database of volunteers. And I think that's the discussion that we had, um, with the individual with the CER program. Like if, if you want to have, you know, a database already preset of volunteers or certain sets of skills, you can go ahead and do that. That would help us.
Okay, I understand. That's what I was looking for. Thanks. Sorry. Anybody else want to grill Dustin while he's here? Sorry, we didn't mean to grill you. It's just a fascinating conversation.
It usually crosses over to fire as well.
Yeah.
So it goes kind of in his situation there, um, that just the city is going.
Yeah, my, I, I do a lot of coordination with John Miller with, uh, with the county. And also various organizations that, you know, as a public works entity that we can rely on. Uh, but as far as things that happen within the community, that's probably going to be a lot more volunteer based, like the immediate game. But as far as like infrastructure and everything, like the bigger stuff, we already have a lot of that covered. Um, and we get a lot of help from the county office.
And there's a lot of interface between a city and a county and a, and a state when those things are happening. And you need to have those people in place to do that. The first thing about your city manager or whoever's the alternative in that situation.
But it sounds like the answer is probably for this individual to then build up a database. And I've, I've pointed a couple of people to him already. So I, I wasn't sure if he wanted something more formal, but it sounds like that's the right, right move.
That's the right move for, for now.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure I wasn't sending people the wrong, wrong direction. Cool. Any other comments or grilling?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dustin.
Also, um, I know we don't have, uh, Brian Feeney's not online today. So if you have any engineering questions as well, I can, I can answer that.
It can work right there.
Forgot to call recipes.
No, I, I mean, the report looked pretty solid. I, unless somebody else saw something I missed or had a question.
I was running about, uh, several backward testing. Out of curiosity, though, two years ago, I sat for a class and took it and passed. It takes about fifteen minutes to the backflow test.
Really?
Yeah. So I got, I guess, I was running, um, is this something we do for our city to like charge as a service? People like, I know when I was doing dirt or water, like, hey, welcome, welcome to the, to their rivers. People were asking me, how do I do backflows? Does the city do it? How do I do it? Like, well, the city will do your water, the natural law. You know, so the bottom part of it is essentially we could maybe offer as a service and in turn.
That is actually something that we have been discussing. Javier has brought that up because Javier has the certified backflow test for the city. He doesn't go out and do the testing. And so he basically gathers all the reports from all the testers.
Yeah.
And so, um, with that aspect, we're trying to come up with a program that is easier to get all that information. And easier we get that information, then we can potentially pass on to a program where maybe we can offer a certain service. Cause I know TWD, uh, does something very
It's not very intel, it's not, you know, it's just a matter of this. English five, that's gonna be fifteen, right? At least fifteen for you, maybe five. All right. So it's pretty quick. So, all right.
Anything else? Thanks. All right. Educational. All right. And next is Mr. Miller, planning.
Yes. Hello, Counselor President Dunbrow and fellow counselors. Steve Miller here. Sorry, I can't join you tonight. Um, I don't have anything to add to my report, but you may have some questions, um, Counselor Dunbrow or some of the others on, um, some of these follow-up signs that we need to place to help some of the businesses in the community. When people want to be posted on the, um, highway signage on Highway twenty-six. So if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to help you with those. But, um, in, in addition to the staff report that I've provided, I don't have any, uh, additional information.
I did have, I had a question on the, and this is just for my own education and hopefully everybody else's, on the tree policy. So as, as I read this, we're, what I think I'm hearing is we need a policy to make sure that we don't have trees falling on people's neighbors' houses is kind of where, what I was getting from that. Is that fair?
No, that's a great question. I appreciate you asking that question. It's, it's kind of twofold, if you will. Um, we do have a current, um, code enforcement issue that we're dealing with in regards to a, a few large pine trees. Um, that are on a property that, uh, fronts off of Main Street. But the person who's having a problem with the trees fronts off of North. And, uh, we've been working with them to try and resolve the problem and they have been able to, um, come up with an amicable solution to, uh, remove the trees. So they're, they're, these trees are anywhere from about seventy feet to eighty-five feet tall. Um, and they have dropped trees, uh, uh, branches, I should say. They have dropped branches onto the neighboring home and vehicles. And he's quite concerned about the overall safety of that. And, and so we have been facilitating the conversation between the neighbors to try and get some resolve. Our, uh, effort was to try and get some maintenance of the tree, try to get some pruning of the branches, get the dead branches out of there so they wouldn't fall on the vehicles in the home next door. And, um, as a result of those conversations between the neighbors, they have agreed to remove all three of those trees. Um, and so they're going to split the cost, uh, to get that done. And, and I understand that that's probably going to happen sometime within the next, uh, few weeks here. They're going to get that taken care of. Um, but I think in terms of the tree policy that you're getting at, one of the things that the city is starting to see is, um, our tree code is pretty, um, lacking, I guess, in terms of having some type of follow-up if you want to take a tree down. The only, the only requirement in the current tree code is if you have a heritage tree. Those are the protected trees and the city are the heritage trees. And there's only one tree that's been documented as a heritage tree in the city. So there's no other protected trees. And it's not so much that the trees need to be protected, but our concern is, uh, uh, we understand that the city would like to move towards being a tree city, USA type of a, a tree city. Um, and so our hope is that, um, if people are going to take down particularly a tree on their property or a street tree, that they could at least replace it with a new tree somewhere, um, on their property or at least replace it with a new street tree. That may not be so, um, destructive as to, um, uh, lifting up the pavement or the sidewalk or whatnot. And so we'd like to work with people on, you know, addressing this concern, but we'd like to have some strength in our code or in our policies that require people to at least, um, if you're going to take a tree down to replace it with another tree somewhere, somewhere else on your property. So, uh, we can maintain a strong tree canopy within the city.
Uh, it's definitely a really good idea to have a large tree policy. So when that, every couple of years, we're acting as the, uh, intermediaries between neighbors about trees. Maybe trees over a certain height should be, I don't know. I, I don't know how that possibly would work, but I do have very large trees around my house that have trees jumping on my roof a lot. And I just have to hire somebody to go there and take it and take it down. So it'd be really great to have some kind of policy to prevent, you know, or make, make it accountable for branches that people um, that's just a good, good effort that we don't have. So not only taking down smaller trees and finding another one, but it just isn't something about big rows we have.
Well, that's a really interesting comment, Counselor Fage, because when, uh, the city of Portland had the recent storm that came through a couple of years ago that dropped a bunch of trees in the west hills of Portland and damaged several homes and whatnot. There was a conversation about maybe there should be a limit on how tall trees are in the city limits, right? Because, you know, if you look at an average lot in the city, your lots are fifty feet wide by a hundred feet deep. And we got trees that are eighty-five feet tall, right? So in theory, that tree could fall and hit two homes if it's falling sideways, right? If it's falling on the short side of the lot on the fifty-foot width, um, it could hit potentially two homes when it falls. And so there is discussion about what, what is a good height for a tree in the city limits? You know, is, is fifty feet the right height or is eighty-five feet okay? And I don't think we're going to go there with this particular policy. It's more to do with, um, if we take a tree down, it would be responsible to replace it with, with another tree. Um, maybe a smaller tree, you know, trees that maybe only get to be about thirty-five to fifty feet tall versus, you know, pine trees like Doug Firs or something that can get to be, oh, close to a hundred feet tall. Those, those might not be practical for a city. But, um, in this particular situation, you'll, you'll see a, a proposed tree policy, uh, coming before you that, uh, really is trying to address the removal of a tree with the replacement of a tree. We, we don't want to become, you know, the, um, hardcore tree city, you know, maybe, um, there's some out there that you're familiar with that, um, have some pretty, um, difficult requirements to meet. And, and some of your neighbors have to sign off on you removing a tree on your own property. We're not going in that direction. We're, we're just trying to maintain the tree canopy right now.
So what I'm suggesting is, uh, you did make yourself clear earlier saying that it's about removing a tree and putting the wood in. I was asking, in addition to, while we're looking at that, can we look at the, uh, large trees that potentially have branches falling? Like you mentioned earlier, in your investigation.
I, I think when we bring the tree policy before you, that would be a great conversation to, you know, discuss that. Um, in, in this particular situation with these trees, um, on the properties and discussion, um, we shared with them that our requirement would be for them to do maintenance on the tree and not remove the trees. Um, but as a, as a result of the neighbors getting together and, uh, discussing this, um, they've agreed to work together and, uh, jointly share the cost of removing all three of the large pine trees because, um, the neighbor is that concerned about them. And so, um, they've agreed to do it, um, on their dime and instead of doing maintenance, they've agreed to removal.
But I think to your point, Counselor, I think we could bring it up. Yeah, no, but I think it's a good point. Like, I'm, I'm curious what goes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that we're really, really happy that these neighbors were able to, um, come together and work together for an amicable resolution because, um, it doesn't always work that way and they, they worked really well together. So we appreciate that.
Great. Good, good, uh, outcome. Okay, anything else? Once. Okay. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Um, moving on, item nine, unfinished business. We have none. Uh, item ten, new business review and approval of application for a fee waivers Jesse made. This, you Bill?
It wasn't, I wasn't able to be at the meeting where they discussed this, but I have the application, uh, um, yeah. I think, even, I mean, it's in the agenda packing, so, um, if you've been able to give it, you know, several read-throughs, that's great. If only one or two, that's good too. Um, I think the thing that, um, the, the Parks and Recreation Board really kind of went after, um, with the application was a couple of different things. Number one was to make it clear what types of meetings don't get to qualify for a fee waiver. Um, very explicitly, just so that the person who might be entity or the person who might be looking for a fee waiver can kind of go through a checklist of, I don't qualify. Um, but the, the, really kind of the, the big message or at least kind of the big, big checkbox, it's a bit more for a fee waiver is a bit more of an elaboration. If you're, uh, a five oh one C three or any kind of nonprofit or not, um, you, you really kind of need to be demonstrating that you're doing some kind of public good for the community. It's not just a matter of being this nonprofit or that nonprofit. There's all kinds of different types. There's hobby nonprofits that may or may not, you know, do a public good. Maybe they choose to as a result of being a good fraternal or craft organization or something. And then you have some whose sole mission is blood donations, things like that. I mean, like truly public good is the mission. Um, and so, uh, you know, personal record really kind of, um, walked into that idea that the criteria for fee waiver really needs to be about demonstrating what the public good is. The application does give some ideas, suggestions or examples of what that might be. But, um, the applicant needs to fill out the information and, and kind of demonstrate, provide that information. So it's not just a matter of, um, you know, we have a, we have a nonprofit rate, which is half of the resident rate. And, um, it's the, the default, the, the appropriate default rate for a nonprofit to pay for all nonprofits is the nonprofit rate. But if you have a, do a public good specifically, then, you know, then you're a candidate and, and, but let's see what that, let document what the public good is. So that's the emphasis here and, and that's what they wanted to come across, um, in here for you, Ron.
Yeah, I think this came from our conversation, um, in terms of helping provide some parameters for the city council in making the decision about when fees are, uh, waived essentially, um, you know, and then and so they looked at it and I, I see that they said, you know, it has to be a nonprofit. It can't be a private entity. Um, you know, there has to be a public good, um, it can't be future services. So, um, but I did have a question because, um, it, it seems like this, this would be, this would come in as opposed to coming to the council. This would come in and if it got denied, it would then come to the council is my understanding. Um, one thing I don't see on here, which may be relevant, is a number of, um, with fee waivers, a nonprofit can receive per year. So for example, the example, the blood one or whatever, let's say they need to use Jesse May's. You know, is there, is there going to be a limit on, you know, that they could do that once a month versus another organization that wants it? You know, quarterly or because any nonprofit is, would prefer to have a waiver, I'm sure. Um, so I'm wondering if there's, if that's relevant because we do have a nonprofit rate, uh, as well. So that's my one question I have on it. And thanks to the parks, parks, uh, board as well.
And that may be something we need to send, we need to get clarification for parks. Um, who attended the last park report?
I'm
Did this come up during that? Do you remember?
I don't. The number of times we can
That part didn't
No, this, this part didn't come up. But I, I did want to say they did, did it, we had come up with preserving the rights.
Yeah.
And, and they did get that in there.
Yeah, I like to talk about, this is to the, uh, to the city council. This is, well, I don't want to create a something that, with the city council's time, we have something here that's going to be, uh, done by city staff as saying, sorry, this is not neat. I don't want to create a thing where, okay, well, after those specific council, you know, forty-five minutes of that time and play base heartstrings. I don't wanna create a thing where, okay, well, I can go to the city council and use it, you know, forty-five minutes at that time and play everybody's heartstrings. The city council, when I come up to is has to be. First, it was, it was no, so no. What compelling reason do you have to make this a yes? So this should be by default for us.
Maybe, yeah, maybe it should come directly to city council instead. Maybe this comes to city council and that's how we make the decision. Sorry.
Counselor Haver.
Uh, can I, I'd like some clarification on the proposed implementation plan on this. When I read it, I just assumed this would be, you know, and these are facing. And it would be submitted to the city and maybe there'd be a workflow. I didn't see this as. Us as a staff stock gap. So, I mean, this seemed like a well-rounded and thoughtful solution. I was curious what the.
Yeah, I mean, the the intent, the intent was so that you don't have to hear about this anymore. This is like at application time. This fee waiver application is turned in with the Jesse Mays rental application. And then with your, maybe not this document as is, but with your blessing on. What the fee waiver document, application document looks like. Staff uses it to evaluate um and now, and then it's also up to you all to have. If, what are the criteria for an appeal of that decision? Um, so, you know, it it does. I I think a big, good question for you all on this particular document is, do you feel comfortable? To Council Fage's point, do you feel comfortable that this document is sufficient to? Put a stop to the number of appeals, the direct appeals to you all if somebody does not get a fee waiver?
You know, I will echo Council McCall Wallace's uh thought process along the lines of. Creating some sort of um cadence or frequency in which a waiver could be used. I I think that part I'm a little unclear. Is it once per quarter? Is it four times per year? Is it once a month? Um, but I think the intention of trying to prevent it from coming to council is there. And I I'm in full support of this document with the addition of some sort of frequency of use limit.
Counselor, you're sure.
Um, uh uh I'm confused about the this, but. I is the concern about the uh minimizing frequency of um requests for. For hall passes, I guess. And if so, like we could deploy this as a measure, you know, if there is.
Adjust as needed.
A perishable change. Um but the other consideration too is when we do rent these out, I've been a part of a nonprofit event. And oh my goodness, you know, I think that um there was a lot of like, thank, there was a lot of handholding that need it was needed. And how do we mitigate that? And 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 what if we need to per- provide any like special accommodations? That would also be a consideration to to include, but I'm in full support of this.
Yeah, one more.
So um I think that when we we talked about this, it was also to bring it forward so that. Anyone could apply. It wasn't just that you knew someone, because at this point it feels a little bit like you had to know someone at council and they brought it. They they were there helping you come ask for a waiver in in a sense. So it was an idea of making it equitable throughout the community to anyone who was. Um involved in a nonprofit. Um and my concern would be still the frequency, but I feel like. If this is the direction, and we've made it really clear here, that if if for some reason it's denied and they feel like they're. They should get it because even though they're a corporate, it's a corporate event or a commercial event, um. They're gonna come to us and we're gonna say, you know, it's still denied. It's the thing. So I don't think it would necessarily mean that just hearing no. Means you run to the council for the thing. So I'm okay with it going forward, with just the question of frequency.
So, um my two cents, and then we'll kind of wrap this discussion up unless there's something burning. Um, I agree. Um, I think this is great, so almost exactly what I had hoped it would be. Um, and I would say um, I would like to see something about frequency, but I think that can get fixed. And we'll just approve it however you wanna do that. I don't know. Um, and then also I would say, the other thing I would say is. I agree with Counselor Page. Um, I think it needs to be a clear and unmistakable error. There has to be some. Uh legal foundation, but some logical foundation for why they would come to council. And if you come to council twice a year for this. You're probably not gonna ever, I mean, not to be, but like seriously, like, you know, it can't be, you can't come, hey dad, dad said, no, I'm gonna ask mom. Like, we we have to make sure that doesn't become a thing, but I think that we as council can handle that, because I think we're gonna support the city staff in that.
My only clarity I wanna have for, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
My only clarity I wanna have as far as the number goes. Is people see numbers like, oh, I get, I get two free ones. I get, I get one, maybe six months. But well, we're within, within a one, you know. I was, I'm almost okay with not having a number in there. This way people don't get the numbers in there as confusion of like. Well, it's my only one I'm asking for. It's one, it's one, you know, I really, what are you gonna do? I want, I'll kinda leave the numbers out there. Um, they they get a free, a fee waiver and it is all like this stuff and, you know, we'll look at that as as it comes. But I'm hesitant to put a number in there, because the number logically, if people are gonna look at that number and they're gonna. People kill numbers. Well, I have four free passes or I have one or whatever it is, right? I kinda like it as it is. And go, if something comes up. That's like in a series or something, we could look at that if it comes up. I I kinda don't want to put a number in there because. I'm worried about the confusion then has been.
We just wanna direct staff to an extent of if you see a misuse or abuse happening, you bring it to council's attention. Because the city reserves the right and has the authority to deny an application.
I I think that's perfect.
And so could we go ahead and make a motion to approve it?
Just, just to play devil's advocate for a moment. I think the intent of this document is to mitigate risk, to be fair and consistent for all and to to shelve this for once and all. And I'm afraid if we don't put some sort of definitive number, it's gonna open us back up for risks. It could open us up for favoritism or bias. And this could come to us at a future date. Um, so I personally would like to make something ironclad. So that this is not a continual thing that comes to council throughout the year.
Could I ask you a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
Would it work if we directed that as a direction to staff versus in the document, or would you feel better with it in the document? What is your, I'm just trying to draw what you're thinking.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and again, I'm open to hearing everyone's thoughts, but I, again, I I would like something black and white. Because again, then it it does kind of feel like we're passing it to staff, right? And then staff has to be the bad guy and like, well. You've done a lot this year. We're gonna have to ask council, right? Just versus just being very clear with what the expectation is. Um, and maybe this is a good question for staff of like, is there anything else we should consider with this?
Um, I, I think the big thing in my mind is that the application makes clear that the waiver is for. An act, the use of this facility in an activity that's a public good. My concern would be a nonprofit. Some of nonprofits coming along and, whoa, free weekly meetings here, or you know what I mean, the. The the activity that the waiver is being granted is is doing some public good. So that's not gonna happen monthly at most, maybe quarterly. So, you know, I can see both sides of absolute flexibility and. Ironclad requirement, but I I think that given that we're looking for a community benefit divided by the activity we are. Waiving the fee for in here, um it's not a regular weekly meeting or a board meeting or what have you. Something's being done. That's the key. So.
I mean, you, the staff, you guys receive these requests, you would know best based off, based off of insights on how to inform that that number. And, you know, I think. I'd be curious to hear if you had a proposal on that, if if frequency is a concern.
Um, I, in in my mind, if we are about, thank you, thank you, counselor. I, in my mind, if an organization comes along and says. We want to hand out toys for tots every month. Um, and it's planned appropriately so that doesn't interfere with other types of use on the weekend or whatever. What's wrong with that? You know, you know what I mean? Um, if we have organizations doing public good on a scheduled, regular basis, I don't. I don't think that's a bad thing unless it starts to conflict with people wedding receptions or funeral, you know, that sort of thing.
Or another nonprofit.
Or or yeah, it gets, it gets in the way. So it it would be, it would be, it it would be legitimate conflict with another legitimate non- nonprofit use.
Counselor McCall, listen, I have one more follow-up.
Yeah, I just was gonna suggest that we we set a thing in there and say, um. You know, no more than one waiver for per. Year or whatever it might be, whatever the number is, that we set that and um and then that creates a process for appeal. Right there, because they'd be denied because they're doing it, you know, if they wanna do it for twelve months. And here's why. And then it would come to council, or they wanna do it, you know, quarterly, or they wanna, you know, and I think there is that question of the on. You know, what constitutes a public good that the uh. City's gonna do with as well. But I'm thinking that I I feel like we should be able to get this passed forward today.
I'm fine with the stats is. I mean, I think we can adopt it.
Yeah.
And if there is abuse, we can, you will flag, hey, we see a trend here and we can ad- amend this in the policy later.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask, would it, would it, would it work for the? Can general consensus if we pass it? Excuse me, passed it and and gave it a period and said, staff come back to us if you're seeing abuses. Would that, sorry, would that make it palatable for now, or do we feel that we really need to put a stake in the ground?
I think we live and learn. We we tried out and then. But for that, bring us maximum insights. Tell us if you see like what the trends are.
I like it, eh, as is. I think that opinion in a burner leads to people have a perception. That they get X amount to use and this will leave it out.
Counselor ready?
I mean, I think the community will self-police as well. They start noticing.
That's true.
Will bring it to someone's attention. And trust our staff and and we can put a limit on eight months for this this whole year.
Okay, so one last question, and then I think we're ready for a motion. I just wanna make sure, who in city staff is the ultimate approver of these, just so that we know? You, okay, so if you're having a problem, you're definitely gonna let us know. So I just wanna make sure I understood who would come and yell at us if there's something with or. And that's perfect.
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be getting, but we 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 would definitely come and let you know that that this is.
Okay, this is uh.
Scorely.
Okay, no, I I think that's perfect. So I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
Well, then. Uh, I move to approve the Jesse Mays nonprofit fee waiver request as written.
We seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all of them favor passing the Jesse Mays fee waiver request application, nonprofit waiver. Request application as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those. Hearing none, motion carries and will pass. Thank you for the discussion. And now moving on, city manager reports.
City manager, well, um, well, uh. Let's keep it short and sweet. Uh, there isn't a ton um to report budget processes. Um, we had a very long, but. A lot of actually very good discussion, really, budget committee meeting. Um. Uh, we might have uncovered a few, like two or three errors with some math. We we had some questions about, is that, is that enough budget or are those, are those budget numbers accidentally swapped? Um, you know, when you're dealing with thousands of individual cells data, that can happen. So I'm 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 chasing those down following up. So this Thursday, this, at the meeting at six o'clock, this is kind of the formal public hearing meeting where the focus will be public. Um, about public comment. We did allow public comment at the first meeting, but it was really because it was a long meeting. We later saved it. The opportunity for the very end and in limited amount, didn't get, really didn't get anything. But this Thursday. Show up, ask your question, public, ask questions, make comments, that sort of thing. That's, that's the focus of the next meeting. So please do, please do show up and 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 make your voice heard and and learn more about it, ask questions directly. So that that's all very good. We hope to see you there. Um, the only other thing I guess I would point out um is, yes, it is true. The U S Environmental Protection Agency has chosen North Plains as the winner of a million dollar brownfield grant. Who can clear out the contaminated soil and link opportunity area of the property. Um, now, having said that, um I have already begun asking how assured we can be of this grant being realized. Because if you read the news on grants for different entities here and there, including in the state of Oregon, grants get awarded and grants get rescinded. Um, the answer I've gotten so far is, well, it should be. Well, we might not get the paperwork done to secure it, you know what I mean? So. All that is to say that um this is incredibly good news. I gave this less than five percent. I consider, you know, this is a nationally competitive thing. We're talking in this round, two hundred seventy other communities got any kind of money awarded. Um, we were only one of of you in the Pacific Northwest Region Ten that got a natural cleanup grant. And frankly, that is a credit to the process of of all the work that we did up to this point, the Urban renewal agency did. In all the studies that are done, all the planning that was done, so that. When we, the very first time we applied for funds, it was a quote-unquote shovel-ready project. It was known what the issue was. We didn't have to go through a study process. Money could be awarded for a very specific thing. So that's a big part of why we got, why we were selected for, for the award. Now, having said that, I just wanna make clear. That because we viewed the EPA grant as so low probability, we very much took a belt and suspenders approach. To trying to get funding for the project. So we still have a standing ask in the Oregon legislature for the same amount of money. From the state that if the legislature chooses to award us, um that's. Would happen, no questions asked, whatever the conditions are put on it, but that, there would be no question about the money's awarded, we get to use it. The the EPA grant, um again, I I don't mean to sow doubt about it, but just. It's an odd environment right now. I mean, you know, i- if you follow this stuff. So, um, it's an amazing win, but but I think. Let's kind of watch the process and do the process carefully and see what happens.
So it's better like a stolen.
Can we thank for applying for this?
Um, well, yeah, so that's a great question, Council writing. So it was a, it was a team, it was a teamwork, teamwork effort. And and there'll be some press releases, I'm sure, out. Um, uh Columbia Pacific Economic Development District, which is the the or Northwest Oregon. Mostly the coastal counties, kind of the thumb of Oregon, and then it dips down into Columbia County. Um, North Plains, Bang, Banks and Cornelius, like where the, and then, so we're in there too. Um, and just because of meetings I had gone to before, uh of coal pack, when the topic of brownfields came up. And 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 I talked about the the GOA and how we were working through a plan. Months later, they contacted and said, hey, we just got some spare money to throw at brownfield grant applications. We got some money, we'll pay Stan Tech to do the application for you. Uh, but the deadline's in three weeks. Can you put together a public meeting? And and so staff jumped on it. Now Stan Tech did the application and ran the public meeting and an EDC meeting one night. So coal pack, um Stan Tech. Um, and then Washington County Jerry Willie, uh Commissioner Willie kind of directed, hey, remember Bill's got that project over there? And so. I mean, it was kind of a, not I wanna call it last minute, but it was kind of a scramble of having relationships. Boom, um, here we are. So that'll come, trust me. We'll be doing, we'll be doing, thank you, yes.
Okay, and that's about it. Great stuff. Thanks, Bill.
I did have one comment on the budget committee, where we do a Facebook outreach post to remind people to come and.
Yes.
Yeah, see, that's handy.
Yeah.
Steve solving problems all day. All right, so with that, I'm gonna go down to council reports, and if I could please, um, Council Paper, would you start? We'll just go all down if that's okay.
Yeah, we'll go. Um, a couple of quick things here. Uh, I did want to just mention. Um, the concern we we heard tonight um during public testimony for Bryn Hill and some potential speed and and stop sign. And this might be a a question for Dustin or Steve, um or even Deputy Shuts who's here tonight. Um, of just, you know, one, my first question was, is there anything? That we can do immediately besides proactive policing? Is this something that we can? Add a stop sign in, or is that gonna require a survey? Um, so again, I don't, I don't expect anyone to to jump in and and share your immediate thoughts, but I did just wanna. Echo that concern, um, because I I think that is something, you know, sometimes you just don't realize. These areas of risk until it's fully built out and people are living there. And um I just wanted to echo that to to bring it up potentially to a future. Um, agenda item, if if that's the will of the council.
I.
I accept that.
Yeah, everybody is good with bringing it up in the next, or in a future meeting soon.
Yeah, I should have asked me to talk about the the street width and uh how many feet of straightaway it is. I know you shouldn't have over a hundred feet of straightaway and that, when that, when this found out, we didn't have it, so.
So it sounds like that is something we do wanna bring. So it sounds like that is something we do wanna bring.
Sure.
Oh, um.
And if not a stop sign, better speed bumps?
Well, we'll discuss that. I mean, it's it.
I'm thinking like.
It was specifically made as not to have a straightaway. Cuz people, straightaway is the kind of a fast, right? The more narrow it is, the less people speed, so. But we'll discuss that.
So, yeah, I think that's something we wanna get on a a agenda soon. So we'll um, we'll add that to.
Safety.
Hmm, yeah, very soon.
And I know there's other places in town.
Yes.
That have the same issues, so.
But I I think if we can, we can understand what we need to do as a council.
Yes.
If we will take one thing, then we can figure out the policy and then the city can do what they gotta do.
There you go, let's.
Okay, Counselor Piven, thank you.
Gosh, I'm trying to think. A couple of other things, uh, just congratulations again to the city for the brownfield grant. That is a huge, huge win, um, something, you know, I know has been a long time coming. This is something I remember we discussed at the previous council and with the help of staff. Um, you know, it's it's finally come to life. So just thank you, thank you, thank you. Bill especially, um, so I know you've you've, this has been your your project for a while now, so thank you. Um, I think the last thing I would just share is, uh, over the weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Tall Valley Fire and Rescue uh Citizen Academy or Community Academy. And I can say without a doubt, a once in a lifetime experience. Uh, if you haven't already received an email, you'll receive another one cuz I've signed you all up um to be invited. Um, but it is a once in a lifetime experience um where you really get to um just learn a deeper understanding for the fire districts and operations and the training. And actually get to be a firefighter, a day in the life of a firefighter. Um, so wanna give a shout out to Corinne Haney in case she's on this call or she's listening later. Um, but she is the government public affairs officer for Tall Valley Fire and Rescue. And she was um so, so helpful during the entire process. Um, we'll actually see her here at the next meeting, I believe, for the State of the District address um for TBFNR. But um, you know, during this, this um academy, it's it's a twenty-six hour commitment, so you show up at seven AM in Sherwood at the Tall Valley uh Fire and Rescue Training Academy. Um, and you go through a lot of presentations from the chief, um, from different department heads as well, just learning about the operation. The professionalism, just how important it is for the culture of TBFNR. And I really walked away with such a profound respect for just the academy and how how they represent um and set that tone right off the bat for trainees. Um, a couple of things just during the actual um presentations, you know, I learned that seventy percent of the calls that TBFNR respond to are EMS or medical calls. And we also learned about how um, you know, heat maps and how you'll see a really big concentration around assisted living and how that has such a huge impact to the resources that are needed. So um, looking at the heat map, you know, North Plains is pretty quiet. Um, and and someone had joked with me and they said, when you, when you go to the station tonight, you'll get a good night's sleep.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, that was the case. Um, but during the uh academy, you know, we went through forcible entry. Um, we got to drive a fire engine, which was again, once in a lifetime. Um, got to use the jaws of life, so the spreader tools essentially to get into a demo car. Um, and then at the end of the the afternoon, uh, I was driven to Station Seventeen here in North Plains and got to meet the crew, uh, really, really, um, again, just really grateful for all of all of the crew. Um, I will say shout out to uh to Sunny who um is stationed here at Seventeen as well and Russell. Um, but during that time, you know, uh, when I first arrived, I was really anxious because I was thinking, ah, there's, there's a call. And during this time, uh, you know, I heard a radio and I was like, is that it? Is this a call? Is this it? And they're like, no, no, you're fine. And as the night progressed, um, we got one call and it turned out to be a false alarm. And uh, during that time, we got to see just the camaraderie amongst the fire station. And um, it was really, I I just can't say enough great things about it. And um, the next day, you know, woke up, had one more call, it was a false alarm, but overall, it was a really great experience. And I will say, um, this the professionalism and the training that the firefighters go through really gave me a peace of mind, um, that when that happens, hopefully never does. Um, but if if something ever happens, that um, we truly do have top notch, top notch um fire response. So um, again, highly encourage interview if you get that invitation to uh to try it out. And I know Counselor Page had done it last year or the year before, uh, but.
Just uh, those businesses have fires in reference when I was doing that.
Um, so that being said, I feel really passionate. Again, it was a really great experience and very grateful for. And um, just really hope all of you take advantage of that opportunity if your if your schedule allows.
Thank you, Counselor. That sounds awesome.
I just wanna give a shout out to the grant, winning that ground field grant. That's awesome and exciting and they got my wheels spinning and thinking next step. So I just wanna give a shout out to you and the team and, you know. Make, let's make magic happen.
Teamwork makes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And we have been our partners outside, yes, so it's great.
So it's been a grand though, grand, my idea to fix there to actually remedy that was to uh. Yours will be shot check redemption. Put your pocket slowly lock, lock it off. But that wasn't gonna be a good one. You know, pocket aside, uh. Coming up on the thirty-first, I wanna give a commercial out for a nonprofit, um. The Washington County uh Justice Center, um Savage Center is having their dinner with diamonds event, which is a dinner. It's kind of fancy. Uh, they uh. They uh, they they charge for dinner, which is which is the fundraising. And you get to sit with uh various other people in the in the in the community and have dinner with them. Uh, eight people to like a table. So I'm going, my wife's on the board, so I have to go. Um, but it's this one, it's it's, yeah, I I'm not, I'm not to go cuz because of that. If anybody wants, the Justice Center wants to go and support this nonprofit desk that uh services all of Washington County. It's a very capital intensive, um. Uh, project they've been doing. And they always need help and people just to be aware of what's go, what's going on. Um, check on Facebook, my wife will be posting about it or send me an email, I will. Send some information as well.
I could send out an email to all.
It's it's Saturday at five thirty, the thirty-first. It's a nice dinner and it's a hundred twenty-five dollars and it's a good cost. Commercial, thanks.
Cool, thanks, Counselor. Counselor McCollus.
Yeah, um, so my meeting this time was the planning meeting, which was the joint work session. I don't really think I need to report on it cuz we were all there. And and it is on video for those who um are interested in seeing that art session, I believe, as well. Um, and I did have an opportunity to uh visit the the chamber meeting this month as an individual. Um, and learn more about the Greenlight Project and Central Cultural. Um, involved in it as well, and it's exciting that Central Cultural will be bringing programming to the site. And that programming is available for everyone in the community. It's not just available for the residents. So, you know, I know they do a lot of uh programs and activities and cultural events, kind of things and things to get involved in. Um, and I think that's a a great addition to our city. Um, also, um. I believe that based on the timeline, that uh Counselor Piven and Counselor Page would have been involved in the Brown film. Grant as well. I mean, it would have had to come back, I should have, so thank you to you two as well. And uh, a reminder that June fifth is the ice cream social, cuz I haven't heard anybody say anything about that one yet. That um, I hope we're all there as city representatives for.
Yes, if you haven't gotten an email from uh Commissioner Frye from Budget Committee, you will. Just saying, Counselor ready?
Kudos again to the the grants. Um, I have, I was ex officio for Parks and Rec and I I love that board. I have so much fun when I'm there. Um, there's always great conversations, um, where ideas are able to really be discussed and hashed out. Uh, they chose a new ex officio for the Park Foundation, Evan King and an alternate, Patty Burn. They are waiting on clarification on a few things before submitting to us their uh goals and name change. And uh, the biggest thing I wanna bring back is their biggest concern is that there is no more land within the current UGB for a new park. And so just put that on our list there.
Interesting. Okay, um, so I was economic development, um, and we had some good conversations uh just around. There's gonna be some new surveys going out, um, so they're working on trying to get a little bit better data. Turns out the business responses weren't as um numerous as they would have liked. And of course, we like data, so more data is always more helpful. Um, we're also talking about opportunities for a sign and I did clarify, just to share with the rest of council, but they clarified after asking Bill, um, I with the Steve Miller on the signs and it turns out, I think we're probably within the code to to do some signs. And so what Bill and and the um, the EDC had discussed is the potential for a a downtown, or sorry, a Lenco Opportunity Business Association, which would solve a lot of problems for us. And I was excited because that means the city can stay out of it. Um, but we can support them doing good things. So that way we're not on hook for it. They can, they can fund the sign, we can just enable them. And my question to the to the EDC, which came from council, was what do we need to do policy wise to enable you? And they didn't have an answer. I think I might have scared them a little bit with that. They didn't give me an answer yet, but they're working on it. But I think that it was, it was helpful to understand from their side, you know, the sign thing and then understand that, hey, if we, if the if the business is forming um, an association, they can fund it and then all the businesses benefit. And that way it keeps the city, the city and the businesses, the businesses, which is what we would like to see in the city. So I think there's some exciting things coming and hopefully we'll have some good, we'll have a good working session, I believe, in July, if I remember right. Um, and they're gonna bring some reports in, but I think it's also gonna be helpful for us just having a good conversation on where they see things going and and what they need from us and then, you know, where we'd like them to continue to target. Um, the other thing is I did, I have talked to Bill a couple of times and we'll have to work out when, but we do need to get a URA board meeting soon. Look at extending the URA um and determine what that looks like. Um, I I mean. Well, we'll, we'll talk about it when the time comes, but and there's also a couple more businesses that, um, you know, come up that Bill's mentioned before that wanna, um. You know, might need some opportunities. I did also get uh to do the veterans park cleanup um Saturday. Which reminded me how old I am cuz moving that much park much is not fun anymore. But um, I then afterwards, we went to the road and I got to meet the new owner and she had questions about the URA, so I invited her to the next URA board meeting and to come talk to city council because I mean, they they've done a lot cleaning up the rugby camp. Been there, it looks really great. And um, I mean, I loved the road before, but they're really cleaning up and it's, she's got some big visions. So it'd be interesting to hear from her and her husband, what they see, where they see this going and and what they wanna see. So I just told them, we'd like to hear from them cuz it's a big business in our city. That's all I got. Oh, I'm sorry, no, one other thing. I did wanna say, uh, thank you to everybody that came for the public comment on the UGB stuff. And Jacqueline, um, you provided some good stuff that I wanna look at. I don't know if there's anything really to go on the agenda, but I did wanna talk to you cuz I have more questions. I haven't digested all of it, but you gave me a lot to think about, so thank you. And with that, do we need to review the calendar or can you check your ex officio duties? Pretty good, yes.
Pull up, um, on the, I was unable to make it to the park stamp. Did everything get done that needed to get done?
Oh, yeah. No, no, we're good. Um, I think Cindy is going to plant some roses cuz we were, we moved some um hydrangeas out of the sun, but no, it went really well. Um, we had some good health and yeah, it looks great. Oh, and you should come to the memorial day ceremony.
They always have a very nice, set on a very nice eleven AM. Yes, eleven AM on the.
Yes. Okay, so ex officio duties were good, monthly meetings were good, council committee appointments. Good, alright. So with that. At eight twenty-eight, we are adjourned.
Isn't like the um. The chamber included in our meeting.
I don't know, it's a good place with the.
The chamber on this. Yeah, yeah, some some cities have them included. I was.
Um, I I I think that's something that. That's some. Um, I I think because the council's prayer composition had chamber leadership, it was felt to be redundant.
Got it.
But now that that's not the case, maybe that's something that needs to be taken.
And some smaller cities operate a chamber. And some larger, that's gonna chamber to become its own.